Okay, I'm gonna put you in line.
Yeah. And Nakam, you're right. She has the key right there.
We ready to start? Let's go ahead.
You can always eat that up.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the City Council meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Councilman Nakam to do the invocation and Councilman Lewis to do the prayer.
Amen to Father and Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance. We ask for your help. We ask for your wisdom because it is through you. You are the way, the truth, and the life. Without your sustenance, we cannot survive. It is your manner that feeds us. We ask you to feed our souls and our minds in the same way. We ask you through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Father and Son and the Holy Spirit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman, very much. I'd like to welcome you to the Lafayette City Council meeting. As presiding officer and vice chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to Council Clerk Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The three-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed, and any interruption of this lawful assembly is prohibited and will not be tolerated. Finally, all documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. Announcements, Chair announcements. Councilwoman Abear is unable to attend tonight's meeting as Vice Chair I will preside over the meeting in her stead. Item number six, CO-068-2021, relative to funding for the Cadena Center for the Arts, is being deferred until the July 6 meeting per author's request. Item number 13, CO-076-2021, relative to a drainage servitude abandonment, is being deferred indefinitely per author's request. This item will be introduced, reintroduced to the parish council instead. Item number 16, JO-024-2021, is being deferred until the July 20 council meeting per request of the council members with the concurrence of the Development and Planning Department to allow council members more review time. And I would like to wish a happy birthday to Mary Slimon, Development and Planning Director, which she will celebrate on July 3. Happy birthday, Mary. I don't have any Chair announcements as anyone else have. Excuse me, we'll go to council announcements. Jeremy, would you please read?
Proclamation, June 2021 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go back for just a moment, if possible, to Mr. Nakam. Had his button pressed and I missed it. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question regarding procedure. Back in January, on the 19th, we had a joint ordinance pass. It was Joint Ordinance 022021. And the ordinances regarding to our rules and operations of this, that we established as a joint council between the city and the parish and how we conducted our meetings. And in there, there was, in Section 8, subsection G, I believe it was, there was a portion of that ordinance that dedicated the proclamations to go through the administration's office. And I just want to ask Mr. Ascot his opinion about what's going on with these proclamations and things we've had been going forward since that time. It seems like we've kind of thrown the rules out the wind, and I'm wondering, is that across the board for everything? Can we go from three minutes to five minutes? I mean, these rules don't seem to apply to the council. It's like we have a set of rules for thee but not for me. I'd like your opinion on that, Mr. Ascot, please.
I had to wait for my mic.
Okay. Sorry.
Oh, he's got it. So, the short answer, I guess, Councilman Nakam, is yes, the rules clearly state that all proclamations, monthly recognitions, ceremonial presentations shall be issued only from the mayor president's office. And so, you know, it doesn't take a lawyer, I suppose, to conclude that a proclamation on the agenda by anyone other than the mayor president's office is, does not follow the rule. Perhaps a suggestion, just from the legal side, would be that if the council is desirous of doing what they're doing in a proclamation and wants to make it a proclamation, so to speak, of the Lafayette City Council, which, from my reading of this proclamation, that's not what this is. It's a proclamation of four council members. Perhaps the solution to follow the rules and actually elevate the importance of the instrument would be to redo it as a resolution and have it on the agenda and vote on it as the Lafayette City Council. That would not only follow the rules but also accomplish the same objective.
The resolution does make sense to bring that forward in that regard. I just wanted to put that out there. I think everybody should understand that we just seem to have sets of rules that we ourselves don't follow. And I'd like to see us bring forward a vote on this proclamation rather as a resolution rather than just a proclamation because we've had people escorted out of here because they wanted more than their three minutes so that they would follow the rules. And now we're at a point where we can throw the rules out the window. And that's just all I had to say.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, thank you. This is, you know, we talking about, I mean, I understand about the three-minute rules and what have you, but now we talking about a proclamation. If you do realize the, what a proclamation really means is more or less acknowledgement. That's what it is, acknowledgement. And since we passed this resolution or whatever you call it a couple of months ago, a few months ago, we acknowledged several people. We did acknowledge several people. I mean, I acknowledged two people. Wilford Pierre and someone else I acknowledged. And there was never complaint, never issue. Not one time there was an issue since we passed this rule we're saying. Again, this is a council meeting. This is for the council. And it just felt, it just made me disappointed when we passed this. When I was for it, but then I started thinking about it, we giving someone else authority to acknowledge someone for the council. We giving someone the authority to acknowledge, and we are the council. This is the council meeting. It's no one else meeting. We in a council room right now. This is the council auditorium. It's for no one else but the council. So we should make the rules, not no one else, the council. That's what this meeting is about. I ran for council member, not for nothing else. So when I want to give a proclamation or acknowledge someone, I should have the authority to do that, not someone else. All five of us, all 10 of us should be the ones to acknowledge someone, not no one else because this is for the council. Every one of us ran for either city council member or parish council member. So we should have the authority to do whatever we want, the council members. If I want to acknowledge someone, why can't I? Why I cannot acknowledge someone? If anyone of us council member want to acknowledge someone, why you cannot? Why someone else have to acknowledge them? For Reginald Thomas, that was the other person I acknowledged. And we took pictures with him. No one complained? Why this special, why we spend special attention to this? Today, I read the Pledge of Allegiance. I read it quite often. At the end, what I see, liberty and justice for all. That's what we read. We celebrate Flag Day Monday. Yesterday, we celebrate Flag Day. All the flag do is occupy space. And we want to acknowledge someone that's taxpayers, human beings, and we have a problem with that. That's, you know, that's kind of, we can't recognize human being that pays taxes, that buy clothes, pays sales tax, that breed, that take a bread every day, but we gonna acknowledge a flag that all it does is occupy space? And we cannot recognize someone. And I, my blood, my sweat, exercise, and walking to represent people, and we have a problem representing people, giving the acknowledgement, cannot acknowledge someone. They're gonna help elect one of us again when we run for reelection, they will elect us. And I get these emails, I get these texts saying that, "I'll see to you that you don't get reelected again if you give a proclamation for someone." Please, I just don't understand. No, please, I just don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Madam Clerk, can you do me a favor? And can you read the specific section of that resolution? And let's make it clear, it was a resolution, correct? It wasn't an ordinance, right?
Correct. And I'm sure legal could confirm it was a resolution.
It was a resolution. It wasn't an ordinance. And what exactly is the fact, Paul, of a resolution versus an ordinance?
Okay, so, under the charter, a resolution is an expression of the will of the council and does not carry the force of law as opposed to an ordinance, which is the force of law. And the reason you do your rules in the form of a resolution is because the charter specifically says that you shall do that by resolution.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, I asked you earlier if you had a copy of the actual resolution that Mr. Nakam referred to. Do you have that available in handy?
Yes, yes, sir.
If you don't mind, can you read it, please?
That certain area, that certain segment of the Rules and Procedure under number one, "All proclamations, monthly recognitions, and ceremonial presentations shall be issued only from the mayor president's office."
Proclamations, ceremonial presentations.
And recognitions.
And recognitions. Have we done any of those prior to tonight since we passed that resolution?
Yes, sir. You had requested that we look to see, and just in 2021 along, we had about seven. Seven ceremonial presentations and recognitions.
Do you recall if any objections were raised to any of those by anybody?
I can't say for sure, but I don't recall any.
Paul, do you require if any objections were raised to any of those? Pat, do you recall if any objections were raised to any of them?
No, I did not. And I just acknowledge I did two of them myself. Nobody had a problem.
Me neither.
In fact, we all took pictures.
Andy?
No, sir. But there are. You're talking about ceremonial presentation. There's a difference between that and proclamation.
But the resolution addresses all of them.
That is correct. And we've been out of rules since the beginning of the year, obviously.
Okay. And you did not object to any of those. They were in clear violation of the rules, right? According to your...
Ceremonial presentations versus proclamation. And I think there is, obviously, there's fine differences in ordinance.
Well...
There's reasons for that.
The res, but, but in, but the resolution, it's a resolution, not an ordinance.
You're giving a proclamation that is basically the weight of this government.
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's not an ordinance. It doesn't require a vote.
It does say the city council.
What says the city council?
In the proclamation.
No, it does not.
Does it say the city council in the proclamation?
It says the majority of the city council.
It doesn't say the city council. And in fact, I specifically made that clear in several interviews that I did, that this was not a proclamation of LCG or the Lafayette City Council. It was certain members of the council. We started out with two, and then subsequently, two other council members decided to sign on to it. We never held it out as being unanimous.
That's clear for the record, then. Thank you very much.
Or as being a resolution of the city council, which would imply unanimous.
Well, I just want to know if moving forward, then I can also, not adhere to the rules.
Well, if we haven't followed them up to now...
I guess so.
I guess so.
Why do we have?
Don't ask me.
Let's repeal that joint resolution.
Let's do that.
Let's do that.
Let's do that and take care of that.
Yeah.
That would be the proper way to go. I agree.
All right, let's repeal the joint resolution.
Okay.
I think we need to do that.
That's fine. I agree with that. So why don't you and I co-author it on the city side then?
We have to get somebody on the parish side.
Yeah, but on the city side, why don't you and I co-author that resolution?
Yeah. I'd be glad to do that.
To do away with that.
I think we need to.
Okay.
Well, you can repeal that segment of the Rules and Procedures because the charter says you need Rules and Procedures per the charter. But just that segment.
That particular section.
Yes.
That needs to be done.
Yes.
And, I mean, if we're gonna throw out the rules, then we need to throw out the rules. But let's get the rules right.
Let's, I agree.
And I agree with that, too.
I agree.
Mr. Nakam, you have, are you done, Mr. Lazar?
I was simply gonna say that as the city council, if there's one or more rules or sections of rules that are embedded in the joint resolution, I think this council could pass its own resolution as a supplement to the joint rules, where you don't actually have to change the joint rules, but you would supplement the joint rules and clarify what you want your rules as the city council to be that may differ from the joint rules. And that way, the parish council has nothing to say about it, and if one or more of you guys, you know, don't like certain sections, you could change them, delete them, et cetera, and then tailor it to your, to your council.
Even though this passed as a joint...
You're not, you're not repealing that ordinance. And look, the parish council may very well have the same desire, so it may be that you just ultimately decide to do an amended joint resolution.
It's a section of the joint ordinance.
Yeah. But I'm just saying there might be other, other vehicles or other possibilities.
I think it goes into recognition, anything in that bulk. I think that's right.
And, you know, I know you kind of use the terms synonymous, but... But there is a major difference between a resolution and an ordinance.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, okay, okay. I'm just saying you keep...
There's no way at all with a resolution.
I'm just saying you keep referring it to as an ordinance. Yeah.
I have enough experience to know that there is a difference.
I assume it was just misspoken on your part, yeah.
Okay, okay, boys, y'all are done? Just, just checking. We're done? Okay, we actually do have a couple. I'm going off script here because there's a couple more last minute. You have, Mr. Lewis has something he wanted to... Well, we're still doing announcements.
Yeah, but since we read the proclamation, I think Mr. Lazar would like the proclamation read, or do you?
Just tell me what y'all want me to do.
Because we're on the proclamation, so we don't want to move...
That works for me. Let's move forward with that. Jeremy, will you read the proclamation?
Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring movements, moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the mainstream of American society. And whereas in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall Riots. During these riots, LGBTQ+ citizens rose up and fought against the discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, while in many places around the globe, LGBTQ+ people still face persecution, arrest, or even state-sponsored execution, all citizens should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on race, religion, gender identity, or sexual orientation. And whereas June is celebrated as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, in cities across this nation, in commemoration of the Stonewall Riots, and the city of Lafayette should not be exempt with its diverse LGBTQ+ community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, and professions who are worthy of acknowledgement and uplifting. Now, therefore, a majority of the city council members do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and signatures to be affixed on this 15th day of June 2021, Glenn Lazar, District 5, Pat Lewis, District 1, Liz Abear, District 3, and Nanette Cook, District 4.
Thank you. I want to give you the floor, Jeremy. Do you, Mr. Lazar, do you want to say anything? Do you want to speak? No? Who's gonna stand? You're welcome. Sorry, I got a bad knee. That's why I'm not down there. I promise. All right, moving on. Mr. Lewis, you have the floor.
Oh, I do.
You do. You asked for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Cook? I went somewhere Saturday just past, and it was very refreshing that I went at a housing project. And again, as I say, it was very enlightening. The kids was having much fun. And when I say much fun, they had activities as far as slides, water slides, things to jump on. They had popcorn, sodas, apple candy, I mean, cotton candy. And you know what? The parents are so excited as well. So when you go to a housing project, a lot of time, people say, "Well, you know, there's poor people live there." But they just like everyone else. They like the quality of life. And I happened to meet the person that was putting this together. And so, you know, we decided to, I want her, I want to introduce her to the council members and to the community and to the mayor president. I would like to introduce her. So can I call up Ms. Leah Bergeron? Huh? Lydia Bergeron. Because I used to work with someone, spell their name the same, but she called herself Leah. But this Lydia Bergeron. And she did a fantastic job, and I want her to have the opportunity to introduce herself to us and so the people could know who she is and how she's doing a fantastic job with the Housing Authority. And I'd like you to introduce someone that's here as when you talk. I know you have another fine fellow with you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor President Guillory, members of the city council. I'd like to introduce my sidekick, as I call him, we've been together a long time, Mr. Milton Carmier. I'm just gonna take a few minutes to thank you all for your support, past support, current support, and I know we'll have future support. There are many great things that are happening at the Lafayette Housing Authority, and I'm honored to have been appointed as the Executive Director. I've been with the agency almost 17 years, so I know the ins and outs of the Lafayette Housing Authority. We will be reopening our doors on Thursday, July 1. Our staff is ready. I'm ready. We're moving forward, and I wanted to just take a few minutes for all of you to get to know me. My door is always open. It's been open since the pandemic. The residents know who I am. They know they can depend on me, and I wanted, again, to introduce myself and thank all of you for the support. I know we'll continue to receive the support that y'all have given to us in the past, and I thank you so very much. Mr. Lewis, it was a pleasure having you Saturday. Mr. Lazar, it was a pleasure. And I thank you both for attending, and thank you for allowing me to address Mayor President Guillory and the council. Thank you so much. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for all you're doing. We appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, Senator.
All right, moving on. I'd like to recognize the mayor president, Guillory. For your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hang on, hang on. You're CAO or ma'am?
Either one.
Yeah, gotcha.
We'll share the mic. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate you. Look, the only thing I have to report on is just a reminder to everyone that, you know, be prepared for the upcoming weather event. Prepare for the worst, hope for the best. Get out there, get your sandbags if you can. Our locations are open 12 months a year. In times like this, when we know a storm could be approaching, we try to be as proactive as we can. So we will man, LCG will man these sandbag locations with LCG employees during, and we'll post the hours. I think it's 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but just look at our Facebook page, our website. So for anybody that's elderly or disabled, you'll have some assistance. Try to bring your shovel if you can. We'll have supplies out there, worst-case scenario. But do want to thank all of our Lafayette excited government employees for carving out some additional time and effort. That's okay. We got a microphone. No, but that's all I have, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, moving on. Again, this is a public hearing, and the speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you read the first ordinance?
City Ordinance 66, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the building or structure located at 212 Karen Drive, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Carol Tompkins Sincox and Byron Durant Sincox care of Gerald J. Block, attorney-appointed, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
I need a motion in a second. I need, I have a motion from Councilman Lewis and a second from Councilman Lazar. I have a note here to read, all kinds of notes up here. I've been asked to read this for Councilwoman Liz Abear. She's asking that we, as her fellow council members, support this ordinance. She has been working with many agencies to get this resolved, so, thank you, Liz. Any council discussion? Am I seeing none? Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
I call for the vote.
District 2?
Yep.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 70, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code and the official map of the city of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette, Louisiana, case number ZON 2021-15, 3047 Vero School Road Annexation, located generally north of Woodstone Drive, east of Vero School Road, and south of Autumn Oak Bend, and assigning zoning classification of residential single-family and mixed-use neighborhood.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion from Mr. Lewis, a second from Mr. Nakam. Any discussion? Council discussion? Nope. Seeing none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
I call for the vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 71, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify case numbers ZON 2021-14, 202, and 208, Leon Parker Road zoning, located generally north of Leon Parker Road, west of Pinnock Road, and south of Beverly Drive. The particular parcels being rezoned from commercial-heavy to residential, single-family.
I need a motion in a second. Mr. Lazar has a motion, a second from Mr. Nakam. Any council discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
I call for the vote.
District 2?
Yep.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 71, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify case numbers ZON 2021-14, 202, and 208, Leon Parker Road zoning, located generally north of Leon Parker Road, west of Pinnock Road, and south of Beverly Drive. number ZON 2021-15, 3047, Vero School Road Annexation, located generally north of Woodstone Drive, east of Vero School Road, and south of Autumn Oak Bend, and assigning zoning classification of residential single family and mixed-use neighborhood.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion for Mr. Lewis, a second for Mr. Nakka. Any discussion? Council discussion? Nope. Seeing none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
I call for the vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 71, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify case numbers ZON 2021-16, 4800 Block, West Congress Street rezoning, located generally north of Nazita Lane, west of Rude Berrier, and south of West Congress Street. The particular parcels being rezoned from commercial heavy to residential single family.
Motion in a second from, a motion from Lazard, a second from Mr. Nakka. Any council discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Call for the vote.
Oh, wait, wait.
Just kidding.
I'm so sorry. Let me do this. I do, I do have a speaker, Mr. Preston Bailey, Prescott, Mr. Prescott Bailey.
I'm here on behalf of the developers, so.
Only if they have questions.
Questions, but don't look at me.
I don't think we have any questions. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That was easy, huh?
Yeah, I like those.
All right, call for the vote.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 72, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of city general fund prior year fund balance in the amount of $10,000 to fund the Lafayette Convention and Visitors Commission's 2021 Eat Lafayette Campaign.
I need a motion in a second, a motion for Mr. Nakka, a second for Mr. Lazard. Any council discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Call for the vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 74, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budgets of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $1,250,312 from the city combined bond fund council reserve account to the RPL Fire Station Number 3 project within the Lafayette Fire Department for additional funding needed.
I have a motion for Mr. Lewis, a second from Mr. Nakka. Any council discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Let's call for the vote.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 75, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $267,381.48 from Degel Street Hard Surfacing to the Lake Farm Road Extension Project within the Public Works Department Capital Improvements Division for additional funding needed.
I need a motion. I have a motion for Mr. Nakka, a second for Mr. Lewis. Council discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Call for the vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 78, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council recognizing and ratifying the declaration and certification of a public emergency as stated in Emergency Ordinance, City Ordinance 77, 2021, with regard to the need for drainage measures caused by the continuing rain and storm event and resulting flooding in the city of Lafayette to execute any and all contracts necessary, incidental, convenient, or desirable to address the public emergency and to make emergency appropriations for this purpose by amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of city general fund prior year fund balance by $15,754,000 and increasing the use of city sales tax capital improvement fund prior year fund balance by $4,296,000 and appropriating within the Public Works Department for emergency drainage measures.
I need a motion from Mr. Lewis, a second from Mr. Nakka. Any council discussion on that? Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Oh, it's just kidding. We have a, Mr. Lazard, you have the floor.
I'm not sure who to direct this to, but I guess it's coming to you, Ms. CAO. After we, after we passed this ordinance, the emergency ordinance allocating these funds, we subsequently discovered that we had the good fortune of getting a windfall from the federal government pertaining to dredging of the Vermillion, right? The funds that we got. Is there any way that we can take this, the money that was allocated for dredging of the Vermillion and replace it back into the general fund since we got the 40 or 50 million or whatever from the feds?
Respect the will, I definitely respect the will of the council, you appropriate funds. My recommendation would be to keep it the same, keep those funds appropriated for first spot dredging. And that's my recommendations based on my conversations with Army Corps of Engineers. Couple of things to consider. First of all, we've already have permission to start to remove trees and natural debris from the river, which we've already started to do. So that, that does dip into some of the funds that you guys appropriated. The second thing is, we don't know when that project's going to start. And, you know, with the water still high, it's below 10 feet on Suri gauge right now, but in hurricane season, with, with us being prone, my recommendations, keep that appropriated. We only have permission right now from the Corps to remove trees and natural debris. The next step, I'm told, would be metal objects and things like that. But that, that authority would be given to us probably around the same time that actual spot dredging, that the Corps would take the lead on, would probably run simultaneously. Another thing to consider, when the Corps removes the spoils from, from spot dredging, the local jurisdictions are responsible for addressing that. It's based on my understanding right now is that the money that's appropriated, it may not cover the entire mountain in full candor, but it could be used towards that. So it would still go towards that, that mission. And I don't think it's hurt anything, you know, the previous city parish council had appropriated 5 million, that kind of sat there for a while, and then the council appropriated back into general fund. But again, I'll entertain any ideas you guys have.
Just thought I'd take a shot at it.
Oh, it's, it's fair. Hey, look, I'm, I'm, you know, we've proven that we're going to protect the finance of the city of Lafayette, so hey, like anytime we can, we don't want to spend money if we don't have to.
But I'm with the mayor. I think we need to leave that money in that particular spot right now, just, just to have it in case we, it's a long time before we actually get the other funding, so hopefully we'll keep it there. So hands off.
Oh, you, okay. The, the other thing was.
Oh, you got something else? Okay.
Yes, I do. The other thing was the, the list of projects that the additional funds we allocated were going to be used for. It seemed to be kind of generic in nature in terms of, you know, citywide, you know, drainage control, whatever. I guess I was kind of expecting a little bit more detail in terms of specific projects.
Sure. We can, we can follow up in two weeks, give you, or the next council meeting. So just to recall, what you're referring to is a large sum or a base, a sum. I think it was 5 million for Public Works and then 3 million for Drainage, the Drainage Department. And at the time, if you recall, four, four weeks ago, four, five weeks ago, we were in a little different time. We didn't know what those projects were. So we just, we were still under emergency declaration, both locally and then also in the state, and then later federally recognized. And we just needed the, the money to be there for our guys to act quickly. They did. I know from Derby Heights to Kings Haven, I can name, I can write off a couple of neighborhoods. They went in real quick.
I'm just requesting some.
Couldn't have done it without you.
Just requesting some follow-up in terms of, you know, when we get to the point where we identify specific projects in specific areas.
We have. There's still a balance out there, and believe you me, whenever, whenever we're done with all this and still done, we're finished responding to the emergency, if there's funds remaining, I'll ask you to appropriate to another project or back to the general fund.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just talking about currently.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm just talking about currently, that we could just get a little bit more specificity in terms of specific projects. Great.
Is that all, Mr. Lazard?
Thank you, Madam Dictator.
Mr. Nakka, you have the floor.
Oh, Mayor President, that 55 million that's, that is going to be coming to us. Do we have any idea when we receive that?
So you remember 50 million for spot dredging? Correct. So the, the honest answer is no, we don't know. The best estimated timeframe we're seeing is 18 months at the soonest in regards to actual actionable items. There's a large concern, and rightfully so, on the environmental concern. Thankfully, and again, to y'all, to y'all appropriating the funds, we went ahead and started, and my Public Works Director can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but we went ahead and took some core samples in that process while we were, before we were told to stop. But we still have the, the core samples. We sent it over to the lab to be analyzed. Don't think we've gotten it back yet, so we don't have it back yet. But that's going to help, and I confirmed with Mark Wingate with the Army Corps of Engineers, that will help at least expedite. So maybe that's a, a worst-case starting point, 18 months, so.
So that'll be a discussion, that'll be a discussion for down the road if and when we receive the money.
That's correct. And just to, again, if we have any, any of our friends in Vermillion Parish watching or tuning in, none of this will happen, none of the spot dredging, none of the dredging of the Vermillion until the Army Corps of Engineers clears the, the no-harm status. There's a lot of dialogue with Vermillion Parish right now. Abbey, the mayor of Abbeyville, and then the mayor of Lafayette, who's me, we're the only two in the watershed that have the river running through our city, so we, we definitely work together. There's some other projects, too, we can talk about later that we're working on jointly. But that's, that's one where, just want to put everybody's mind at ease that, just like when we worked with St. Martin on the spoil banks, we'll give those same courtesies to our, our neighbors to the south.
But, and this money appropriated is basically to clear out spots, setting back in up water in the city so it can flow to where it needs to go without hurting the people south of us.
That's correct. And just to further clarify, President Biden submitted that provision in the upcoming budget. It's my understanding, it hasn't been completely finalized yet, so we, all indicate, all indicators from the federal, federal side say that it's going to go through, but there's a lot of, a lot of.
Lot of moving parts.
A lot of items that we, we don't have any control over. But we do have control over the 5 million you guys appropriated, so I think we just do what we can, control what we can.
Well spent it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nakka. Are we, any more council discussion? I think we're good. Any public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, call for the vote, please.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
All right, joint ordinances are final adoption. This is a public hearing, and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Please, Jeremy, please read.
Joint Ordinance 22, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting the manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of city general fund prior year fund balance in the amount of $1,913 to increase the rate of pay for the executive receptionist in the Lafayette mayor president's office.
I have a motion for Mr. Lazard and a second for Mr. Nakka. Any council discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
I call for the vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance 25, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council repealing and reenacting Chapter 34, Article 2 of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances.
I have a motion for Mr. Lewis, a second from Mr. Nakka. Any council discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Williams? Just kidding, I'm not a very good looker. Mr. Nakka, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Ms. Esqot, there was some concerns regarding the due process in this ordinance and the, basically redoing it. Could you explain how this has not really been affected, that is still, there is still a due process in process?
Oh, sorry.
Sure, we, in fact, we talked about this at length during the parish council meeting, but, so essentially, the Administrative Adjudication Bureau, which is a part of the revisions to this Chapter 34 for Divisions 1 and 4, is, stems from state statute authority to establish that. And in fact, the way it currently stands now is you, you have a step that you go to the 15th Judicial District Court. This actually adds an additional layer of due process where your first step is the Administrative Adjudication Bureau, all in accordance with Title 13 under state law. And then if, if satisfaction isn't obtained at that level, there is still an appeal process that you then go to the 15th Judicial District Court. So you in fact have two levels before you even get to an appellate court after the 15, as opposed to one. So it's, it's twice.
It's not a roadblock. It doesn't dead end with adjudicator.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, good. Now, I wanted to clarify that, because it seemed like there was some people that were concerned about.
No, absolutely not. The 15th Judicial District Court is still the available court to take your grievance or appeal from that first step.
Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Nakka. Any other council discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments?
We do have one speaker, Lydia Romero.
Hello, I'm Lydia Romero from Parish District 1. This ordinance establishes a procedure for administrative adjudication and names a hearing officer employed by LCG and appointed by the mayor president as the singular arbiter of whether the, an individual is liable of violating Divisions 1 through 4. The hearing officer is empowered to levy fees, costs, and monetary penalties against private property owners without judicial court proceedings. The hearing officer is empowered to record orders, judgments, and notice of judgments, or liens in the mortgage records of the Lafayette Parish Clerk of Courts Office. LCG grants to themselves the power to enforce the hearing officer's final order, judgment, or notice of judgment. If the hearing officer's final order, judgment, or notice of judgment against private movable property is not complied with, LCG will consider the owner as abandoned their movable property, even if it's on their own private property. LCG grants themselves the power to trespass on private property without a warrant for the seizure of abandoned movable property. LCG grants to themselves the ability to sell or dispose of private property they have seized without a warrant. LCG grants to themselves the power, if you have stagnant water on your property, to trespass without, without a warrant, to enforce the hearing officer's final order for abatement, or if you have tall grass and such, and they have the abatement procedures, then they can charge you for the cost incurred. If you disagree with the hearing officer's final order or judgment, LCG says you may appeal to the 15th JDC. If you don't appeal within a certain amount of time, then the hearing officer can record If you don't appeal within a certain amount of time, then the hearing officer can record a notice of cost recovery or a notice of his administrative hearing order, judgment or notice of judgment in the mortgage office, and shall constitute a lien and privilege against the land upon which the violation exists. Later on, they can use that recordation of a lien as a stake and claim on the property and actually bring it to a court of competent jurisdiction. That's wicked. You must take an individual to a court of competent jurisdiction before any monetary debts can be taken from an individual, before their property can be taken. It is a matter of our constitutional law and guaranteed right that no person shall be deprived of liberty except by due process of law. An LCG employee being able to take property outside of a jurisdictional court is wrong. It's against, it's antithetical to our American government and our constitution. I ask that this ordinance be amended to include a court of competent jurisdiction, because as it stands, it dishonors the Marquis de Lafayette's name, his courage to cross an ocean to fight for our liberty and independence, and the confidence he had in staying...
Thank you, Ms. Romero, I believe your time's up. Is there any other speakers? Thank you.
No ma'am, no other speakers.
I'd like to call for the vote. Oh.
Mayor chime in.
You want to chime in? There you go.
Thank you, just for the councils' consideration and the public. So, take everything Ms. Romero said very, very much to heart, I know all of us do, we value our constitutional rights, so just to put it in perspective here, without the administrative law judge, without the hearing officer, whatever title you want to call it, okay, these are administrative authorities given to us by law, and the legal can opine on that. Without the hearing officer, without the administrative law judge, she's right, one person can make that decision, the department head, and all those recordations, everything that she said, by law, the local government can do by this new administrative law judge, which you guys have already, he's there, y'all have already approved it. This adds a layer of due process, so that when the department head, the LCG employee, another LCG boy makes that decision, instead of just, if there's, the appeal's not done and timely, by the way, it's still recorded, it's still the same thing you just said, except it's one person, and then under this process, the administrative law judge or the hearing officer is bound by judicial canons, because that's an administrative guidance that I've given. Judicial canons are very important, because it adds the neutral and detached entity part. So, that's the gist of it.
Thank you, and I do understand that there were some questions that Ms. Romero had that were going to be submitted already.
Yes, it has been submitted to the mayor president, etc.
The responses will be sent, so thank you, Mayor President.
You got it.
All right, so I go ahead and call for the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Ordinance 26, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting the manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of City General Fund prior year fund balance in the amount of $2,226 in the council office.
I have a motion from Mr. Lewis, a second from Mr. Nakka. Any council discussion? Any comments from the public, Ms. Williams?
No ma'am.
Let's call for the vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
All right, moving on to introductory ordinances, I'll ask for a motion, a second to introduce in globo items 19 to 22nd, 27, excuse me, Mr. Nakka, and a second from Mr. Lewis. Jeremy, please read the ordinances.
City Ordinance 79, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of City General Fund prior year fund balance by $100,000 and appropriating within the Festival International de Louisiana line item for additional funding needed. City Ordinance 80, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a lease agreement for the property between Hyman Memorial Park and PASA Place, and amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing rental income and reducing the use of City General Fund prior year fund balance in the amount of $129,600. City Ordinance 81, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to adjust amounts for administrative and general costs to actual. City Ordinance 82, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $554,024.27 from Fremboostani Extension and Vermillion Lateral 4 to the Nottingham Drainage Rain Tree Cooley Project within the Public Works Department Capital Improvements Division for additional funding needed. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a supplemental agreement number one between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and the State of Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development concerning the state project number H012864, federal aid project number H012864. City Ordinance 84, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $39,765.10 from the repair replace health unit roof line item to interior/exterior repair health unit line item used for the health unit building maintenance project managed by the Public Works Department Facilities Maintenance Division. City Ordinance 85, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to sell one transformer and associated cable that are no longer needed for public purposes to the person with the highest bid. City Ordinance 86, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a pole attachment and wireless facility attachment agreement with Cox Communications Louisiana LLC. City Ordinance 87, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the amendment number one to the electric service agreement by and between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and Stellar Incorporated.
Thank you, Jeremy. Before I go to council announcements, Mayor President, I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Sorry to keep interrupting the meeting. So, on item number 19, I see Scott's here with us, Festival International, appreciate all that you do for our wonderful city and parish, thank you in our region. I understand Councilman Lewis and Councilman Lazard is sponsoring this ordinance, so I'm assuming it'll pass in intro, it gives us two weeks, so what I would recommend, and I just sent a message to my assistant to schedule a meeting with me, Scott, whoever you want to bring, and the two council members that sponsor this ordinance, I have some questions, just want to make sure that we, you know, iron out all the wrinkles before so that we can present to the public and have all our ducks in a row, so, appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any council discussion on any of these intro, none, okay, any public comments?
Yes, ma'am, we did have citizens who called in in support, we had 17 citizens who called in in support of the, I'm sorry, of item number 19, the Festival International ordinance. We had two citizens attend and signed in tonight in support of the Festival International ordinance, and we do have one speaker, Scott Freehand. Okay, support.
I think we're good then, all right. Let's see, so I call for the vote to introduce the ordinance, excuse me, the intro in globo items 19 to 27.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to introduce in globo is approved.
All right, joint introductory ordinances, I need a motion and a second to introduce in globo items 29 to 34. Motion from Mr. Nakka, second from Mr. Lazard. Jeremy, please read the ordinances.
Joint Ordinance 27, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending Chapter 74 of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances relative to theft of services, revisions to enforcement of same, and establishing penalties for violations. Joint Ordinance 28, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to adjust amounts for risk management uninsured loss reimbursements to actual. Joint Ordinance 29, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to adjust amounts for administrative and general costs to actual. Joint Ordinance 30, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $650,000 from Row Road Bridge Replacement to Q Road Extension and Fremboostani Extension Projects within the Public Works Department Capital Improvements Division for additional funding needed. Joint Ordinance 31, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the amendment of Ordinance 72, 2019 to transfer an additional $40,000 in home investment partnership funds within the Community Development Department from community housing development organization set-aside funds to 7th District Pavilion for use in the Maison de la Paye Housing Construction Project. Joint Ordinance 32, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing the non-warranty donation of various adjudicated properties to culture ministries pursuant to Louisiana Revise Statute 47:2205.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any council discussion? Ms. Williams, any public comments? I'd like to call for the vote to introduce in globo items 29 through 34.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to introduce in globo is approved.
All right, moving on to the next comments from the public. This is the time to speak about topics relative to the city of Lafayette that are not included as agenda items. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed for efficiency and to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. Questions should be submitted in writing to the clerk of the council. The three-minute rule will be in effect. Ms. Williams?
We do not have any speakers tonight.
Wow. Okay, I don't know what to do next, then.
What's your name, ma'am?
Annette.
Annette, I think she's signed to speak. Okay, she had the LGBT month of June, that's what I saw, but she also has Lafayette Sculpture Park San Souci, so you could speak to that matter, but the Pride Proclamation you would be unable to speak to. But you can come forward, I'm sorry, I missed that part.
Please come forward, yes.
Sorry about that. She wants to speak about the Lafayette Sculpture Park San Souci.
You can go to either one.
And you can have a seat in the middle, if that's easier for you?
No, this is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Well, y'all opened the meeting with a prayer, and in Jesus' name, and the hypocrisy that was shown was an abomination to the Lord Jesus' name by opening a prayer, and what goes on in Lafayette and what has been voted on is not right, and...
Are you speaking to the sculpture issue at this point?
They're the same, they're one in the same.
Go ahead.
I just, I just think it's very hypocritical for y'all to open this meeting with a prayer and then vote on something that's an abomination to Jesus. You prayed in Jesus' name. Y'all better think about that, because y'all may have the final say here and now, but you will be, you will not have the final say in the end. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have left enough time, so thank y'all for hearing me.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Ms. Williams?
All right, during the regular city council meeting, I'll have a good night, and thanks for coming.